Valdez. We thank you, God, for our citizens, our employees, and for this council. And we pray for your guidance and direction in all the decisions that we make. Thank you. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, council under item four, new business. We have the Roston annexation petition. We'll do that first and then we'll move to the public hearing. And presenting is Allison Adams from COG. Thank you for being here tonight, Allison.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This petition is really to annex one parcel into the town of Valdez. Currently, the parcel is contiguous, which means adjacent, to current town limits. And Mr. Roston will also be requesting a rezoning of the property, which will be forthcoming to reflect a town zoning district. So some background information for you. The petition was submitted by Mr. Roston back in May of 27th of 2025. And so tonight, the request is for the clerk to review the petition and then to certify the request to be sufficient. The request for the public hearing was printed in the newspaper consecutively July 19th and 26th, and then for a August 4th public hearing date. The property has also been posted with a public hearing sign. So all legal notices have been met thus far. And if the annexation request is approved by council, the map will then be signed, sent to the Secretary of State's office and other governmental agencies associated to signify that the boundary of the town has changed. So the request tonight before you recommending to direct the clerk to review the petition and to hopefully find that it is sufficient. And then also to set the public hearing for your August 4th meeting that's upcoming.
Okay. Questions, council? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution directing the clerk to investigate a petition received under General Statute 160A-31.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Any further questions? Those in favor of Sigma Phi by saying yes and raising your right hand?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, council. Next, I need a motion to approve the resolution fixing the date of the public hearing on this annexation. And the date will be August 4th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor of Sigma Phi by saying yes and raising your right hand?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, Allison.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, under new business is review and discussion of the August 4th preliminary agenda. Okay. Counsel under item six on the August 4th agenda. You see those things listed under the consent agenda. Are there any questions on that or any that you would like to be removed?
Well, we haven't seen any of the minutes, so we couldn't have a question there. Except item, we see item A, but that looks appropriate.
Okay. All right. Anyone else? Okay, item seven, new business. Public hearing for the Roston annexation. And we just finished that. Go ahead. Item A.
Yeah, this is just a recap of what you just set the resolutions for. So that would be item A.
Okay, any questions on that, council?
Okay, item B. I'm sorry.
I'd just like to comment on that. For the record, I think this is a great precedent, right thing to do. And I would really like to see sometime in the future other of the Walden'sian founders, heirs who have property adjoining the town of Valdez, property which was not incorporated into Valdez when the town was incorporated, I'd like to see them also seek voluntary annexation to the town. Like it would be a, we hear, we hear from these people frequently because they have a ZIP code 28690 about being Walden'sian, having Walden'sian heritage and being Valdez residents, but they really are not residents. And it would be good if all of these gerrymandered little pieces around the town should, would be eventually voluntarily annexed into Valdez.
Okay, anyone else? Item B, public hearing rezoning, Roston property.
So this is the follow-up from the annexation. So Mr. Roston, as part of the process with the annexation is to enter into the town. The property currently has a Burke County zoning R1. And so the request would be to rezone the property to the town of Valdez District R12, which is similar to what's already out there. So there's no inconsistency there that the board would need to worry about. The planning board did hear the application June 16th and received a favorable recommendation. And it's consistent, et cetera. All legal notice requirements have been met. So as part of that, that is letters to the joint property owners posting the property and then, of course, two consecutive newspaper ads. And so the recommendation here is for council to add that August 4th, to hold that public hearing for that rezoning.
Okay. Questions, council? Okay. Item C, call for public hearing to modify unified development ordinance.
So as part of this request, it's really cleanup to your UDO. And so as part of this, the General Assembly, we were hoping, would correct the downzoning legislation. And that didn't happen. So we're stuck with, the date of the UDO was listed as July 1, 2025. And so it is ideal to back that date further down the road. And so we've proposed a date of January 1, 2026. And hopefully, by that time, the state will have addressed that discrepancy or downzoning. So the recommendation here is, is that for the council to set the public hearing date for September 2nd to allow for enough time to meet the legal requirements associated.
Okay. Questions, council? Okay. That'll stay on the agenda also. Item D, thank you, Allison. Approval of Iron Mountain Contract Resolution, a tentative award for the Valdez Bless Project. Mr. Bo, sorry.
All right. Been talking about this project for a long time. I'm gonna, some of these items aren't here, just to give everybody a heads up. I'm gonna be gone next Monday. So I'm gonna kind of talk in depth a little bit more than I normally would for pre-agenda, just so we have the information already. So on this particular one, if you recall, the Bless Project was that development that we're trying to get some partnership from the county and developer that hadn't gone through yet. These are ARPA funds, so we only have, we're on a tight deadline to get these monies used up. It was about $800,000 grant we got. And so council made the decision that we would like to further pursue this project with what funds we've got available. DWI confirmed that and said, yes, go ahead and use what funds you got available. So we went back to the low bidder, Iron Mountain, revised the scope of work to make it fit our budget. So that's what we've done here. Now you'll see the item is a tentative award because DWI still has to approve the scope of the work. They approved us doing this process, but they have to approve the scope that McGill has outlined. But we don't foresee any issues with that. So we want to make sure we got on this agenda so we can get this project going instead of waiting a whole nother month. So it's gonna be a tentative award for the scope of work with Iron Mountain. And the contract amount will be $634,000 plus a $7,000 contingency for any unforeseen items in there. And then the other amounts go towards the construction administration, design work, and things like that. So this will get us to the finish line on this project. And then, once we get this scope of work done, it'll be able to, McGill was able to design this to where these, this work that's completed can kind of sit and be ready once we're ready to pick up the rest of the pieces. We'll get to use up that money for this.
Questions, council?
Just a general question. Will that portion that we're going to do be of any advantage to either Valdez Weavers or Jordan High School, which are in that area?
Not that I'm aware of. You mean like any byproduct of doing this project?
Well, if they might want to tie into it or something like that.
I don't think so. I don't know for sure. But as far as I know, it's just a standalone for the actual development.
Do you know specific lots? Do we know that it would cover so many lots that we're doing this for?
With the partial project?
Yeah.
Well, it's being designed for the whole subdivision.
For the whole, okay.
Yeah. Now, when we say we're doing a partial project, it's not like we're starting from point A and going halfway. There's gonna be pieces of it that make the most sense to where they can sit for several years even, until somebody's ready to pick up the rest of it and tie it all in.
Okay.
Yeah. We don't want to put like electronic modules or anything out there that could just go bad after a couple of years, so.
Gotcha, okay.
Anyone else? Okay. Item E, approval of DR Reynolds contract for public safety facilities.
All right, so here's another one that's been hanging out there for a while. So this is the contract with DR Reynolds in response to the RFQ process we started last year. And this contract will be for phase one, to do their study for our facilities, for the police department and the fire department. And the attorney has reviewed it and everything is looking good there. So that contract will be a part of the agenda packet coming up.
Questions, council?
Is that going to be the DBIA contract that was specified in the RFQ?
No, it's gonna be, we tried to use the DBIA contracts and we're just running into some problems figuring out which form would be the correct form. It's not, that's not a set of forms that DR Reynolds was overly familiar with and not a set of forms that we frequently use either. So we reverted back to the AIA documents and we found one that fits what we're looking to do perfectly.
Yeah. I think when we interviewed them, they admitted that they hadn't done any, hadn't used this contract, that they said they would use it. And there were some other shortcomings in there to the questions that they were asked. But it is what it is, so we'll make do, I guess, with the best contract we can come up with.
Anyone else? Okay. Moving on to item F, information items in council discussion. Okay, number one, fiscal year 2425 preliminary final results as of June 30th, 2025.
So this is our council discussion, but I can comment on it if there's no other comments. Okay. So obviously, this is seeking some information. So preliminarily, I did look at our numbers ending June 30th. I always like to give a disclaimer that these are all preliminary, have not been subject to the audit. With that said, start with our expenditures first. So our expenditures, I'll give you the overall number. So between our expenditures and our revenues, we had a little bit overage in revenues than we predicted and then a little bit of a underspent the way we had planned on, which is a good thing. With those lining up together, we're looking at about 500, between $500,000 and $550,000 adding back into fund balance at the end of June 30th. Now, the biggest driver of that is the investment income. We budgeted $243,000 and because we had that big surplus of idle funds in there, budgeted $243,000, we actually made investment income of $772,000. So about $530,000 additional in the interest income that we did not, you know, expect to get. So that was the biggest driver of why we're adding so much to fund balance. Now, there's some other things in there that, you know, play into. But I just want to identify the biggest thing as why. Why are we adding a half a million dollar back is because of, essentially because of interest income, so.
Council finance director knows what he's doing.
Well, it's a team effort, everybody, you know, together, so. Yeah.
Will those preliminary results be part of the agenda packet?
I did not plan on putting in the agenda packet because they're just preliminary. I guess we could put it in, I mean, I could put this.
Could we have at least the, maybe the summary spread of, for example, the big sheet that laid out the budgets and the actual for the last three or four years? And then the last number on that version that the council and the public has seen had the year-end results through May 31st and an estimate for June 30th. What I'm looking for is that June 30th year-to-date column. Is that, would it be possible to have that?
Yeah. I could print off the, this sheet you're talking about here, kind of look familiar?
I can't quite read it from there, but that looks like the.
Format, yeah. There's just some things in here, because it hasn't been audited yet, it's still.
Well, we know it's not, none of it was audited. What we have, what we have published wasn't audited either.
Right, right. And I just had to do some manual math to come up with those figures. So when you see these figures, they're gonna look a little off of what I just talked about just because I know some behind-the-scenes stuff that hasn't been recorded yet. So when you see these, they're not gonna be exactly what I just talked about, but just be aware of that, okay?
Let me take just one line out of, for example. The last item we saw for contribution from the reserve was a minus $61,000, which meant we were putting $61,000 into reserves. What would that number be when it's updated? What's the preliminary number there? Instead of that minus 61, I think it was $61,000.
Okay. Are you talking about the budget or the end-of-year actuals? Like this upcoming budget we're in now? I think I'm a little.
No, no, I'm not talking about this year's budget. I'm talking about.
Oh, actuals, so that.
Last year's.
Essentially, it'll be the $500,000 some thousand dollars I just talked about.
So it won't be $61,000, it'll be $500,000 some thousand.
That will be adding back into fund balance, yes. When the audit comes out, I expect our fund balance to go up by about a half million.
So that'll put the fund balance up to about what?
About seven and a half.
Seven and a half, okay.
Yeah.
So we've gained a half a million since the last time we looked at all these numbers?
Right, right.
Okay. Well, that's good.
That's great, yeah.
But we need to get, we need to make sure everybody is hearing that and understanding that. So that's good. All right.
I'll put what I got in there, but just remember it's.
Make sure you put.
Behind-the-scenes math I was doing, yeah.
Item two, status of mobile food truck ordinance. And it's my understanding that this is in the attorney's hands this time for review.
Yeah, so we actually have a draft. I don't know if it's anticipated that this draft will be included in the packet or just disseminated separately. But we do have a draft food truck ordinance for council to start reviewing and making notes on. And then we can refine it as we work through that process.
I think it also has to go to the planning review board, too.
Yes.
Okay. Questions, council? Okay. Number three, residency requirements for Valdez Town Council Advisory Committees.
Yeah, this is something I think we've also previously talked about. It depends on if council's objective is to add a residency requirement to a specific committee or just generally with respect to all committees, there'll be a residency requirement. You handle that in two different ways. If you want to apply to all committees, that would essentially be an amendment to the ordinance and you would just add that qualification in as a committee qualification.
An amendment to the ordinance requires, it's a little more complicated than just adding it to specific committees, is that right?
Yeah, if you want to add it to the committees, for instance, that you formed, then you would just do that by adoption of a resolution.
And an amendment requires what?
It's probably something that Allison can get into better than me. No, okay. Well, I think we're gonna have to have a public hearing on it. You guys will essentially then have to vote on the amendment and decide whether or not to pass it.
And I think I separately asked the quest, or asked a separate question. If we just list five or six committees and say we'd like to modify these committee requirements to include residency requirement, we could do that in a resolution?
Yeah, I think with, yeah, the ones that you previously formed, if you wanted to go back and add that requirement, then you could just adopt a resolution, basically amending what you previously had done to add that requirement.
Okay, what about people that are already on committees that live out of town?
I think you're gonna want to grandfather those in regardless of which direction you go.
I agree.
Anyone else?
Well, what do other council members think about this? Do we want to require residency on most of these town committees or do we not care?
I think it should be something, I mean, Morganton and other towns and cities I've looked at do require, and I think it's only right if people are paying taxes, they should have more of a say-so in what happens in town than somebody who is not invested.
Did we talk about, like, for businesses? If there's businesses that are in town, but their owners are, live out of town, how they would be involved or can they be involved as well? I think that might need to be part of the grandfathering language.
I have no problem with it either, except for, I thought about Heather's committee with police officers, maybe that might not live in town that you may have. And then I thought about the merchants, because some of the merchants don't live in town. The rest of them, yes, should be Valdez residents.
Also need to consider Vadic and the ABC Board.
Well, I don't know that we do. We need to consider all of them, I suppose, but I'll have to tell you. The one that has concerned me is that we're hearing and seeing some comments out there from some of our outside water customers. And I've seen it, I was, I try to stay off social media, but people urge me to look at things once in a while. And one of the things I've seen is that some conversation, people say, well, if we're gonna have to pay all these high water bills, we ought to have a voice in what the town says, what the town decides. And then I think we may have had an applicant, application submitted from somebody who lives closer to Morganton than Valdez, but as one of our water customers. So that's the thing that concerns me. You know, if they're outside water customers, should they be on, sitting on committees? That's just one example, but it's an example. If they're outside water customers, should they be advising the council on how we spend our tax dollars? That's my concern. That's why I'd like to see us clean it up and try to get a resolution that will, and maybe we could work on a resolution over the next few days and run up the flagpole at the August meeting.
Yeah, I think we just need guidance on which committees, if we're doing it by resolution, which committees we're seeking to add to, yeah.
Let's see if we can do that.
Anybody else?
So we're not gonna make a decision August 4th.
Is that?
It might be September, it just depends on.
Well, we're gonna discuss this, I'll look at the committee before we make a decision. I think that's important.
Well, we almost do that.
Yeah.
But we never get any discussion, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Number five, number four.
So we don't need a resolution for the next Monday's meeting, just that we're gonna.
We're gonna work on it.
Work on it, okay. But we're not presenting anything?
Well, I don't know, any reason not to work on it, is there?
No, I mean, again, I just need to know which committees we're talking about. So if you want me to work on a resolution, I can draft it in general form and then you all can plug in the committees that you decide you want to work with.
Well, who's gonna decide on the committees?
Well, I think that would be you all.
Council. Valdez Town Council.
And that will be August 4th, correct?
Well, whenever.
And then it would be prepared for the September meeting with what we.
Sounds like we have a consensus, so we just need to focus on a little bit.
Yeah.
Okay. Number four, status report on $25,000 Western Piedmont Council Government Contract from August 7th, 2023 to December 31st, 2026.
Okay. So this contract was with the COG to do the grant administration work for the Old Rock School Project that we, a big renovation project we did and finished last year. So this contract is actually completed and they've been paid out for all that grant work. We've already got all our grant funding back, so that project's completely done.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was, the reason I raised it was it runs through December 31st, 2026. I never really heard that it was finished, but it is, it's done, right?
Yeah.
They've been paid, we got the grant, we're done.
Yeah.
Okay. Got it.
Okay. Item G, updates on agreements and projects approved at the June 2025 meeting. Number one, Western Piedmont Council Government's planning assistance.
So we've got the planning contract in place on Wednesdays for that. Nothing's changed since, you know, the prior, you know, this rollover of the new year. So that is a two-year contract with a 30-day notice and built into it. But right now, we've got them coming in on Wednesdays.
So we have one day a week?
One day a week, yeah.
Okay. Number two, Western Piedmont Council Government Stormwater Partnership.
So this just continues our stormwater partnership we've had with the COG over the last several, I mean, probably decade or so. Nothing's really been done with this yet because we're just new in this fiscal year. But that actual contract, I think, has, that's a two-year contract, but we're in year number two of that now, so.
First Tryon Financial Advisors.
All right, so we've been working with First Tryon. They've actually sent me a model or a draft of the model. So I've been working with them, tweaking some things, trying to get it a little more, because, you know, they have a generic model they use. But then we tweak it, kind of make it our own inputs that we're looking at, things like that, integrate it with our budget document. So that's in progress right now. They're still working on it. They've actually sent a second version to me to review. I haven't had time this week yet to look at that, but it's sitting in my inbox waiting on me. So, but that project's going along really well. And the model that they sent me in the first draft is very in-depth. Really neat how you can control different inputs and variables and get different outputs. So I think once it's, once we get that finalized and rolling, and then we'll do a presentation to council with it, I think y'all are gonna be happy with it, so.
Okay.
Will that cover the utility fund as well as the general fund?
It's just general fund only.
Just the general fund?
Yeah.
Anyone else? Application for supplemental HALENE funding through DWI.
All right. So if you recall, council did a resolution to apply for this funding. So that resolution, along with the actual application, will be submitted on August 1st, which is the deadline. And the, this is a new program. So DWI, which is the Division of Water Infrastructure, they actually didn't post the program guidelines until last Friday. So McGill was frantically working on this. So McGill was frantically working on this this week to try to get everything pulled together to get that, those requirements met for that project or that program. So they're working on that, we're trying to work along with them to make sure everything gets facilitated correctly. The sewer project portion of it, so what, what McGill has suggested we do, and I think we, we need to, to follow, is hold off on the sewer projects because we, we wanna learn how, because it's such a new program, we need to learn how D W, D W I is looking at these projects. So we get the water projects submitted, we can learn what they're, what they're looking for, what they're grading for. There's another round of applications November first, and if our projects meet those applications, we go ahead and with that sewer portion at that time. So right now we'll focus on the water, see how that goes, see, you know, if there's any differences between their normal programs versus a special program they're rolling out, and then go from there, so.
What did you say the date was, the second date for the?
November first is the, the second round of applications, yeah. So our water plant, obviously, is the, the bigger one that got hit by Helene. So that, we wanna be in that first round for, for that one. And then the sewer plant would be second behind that. So we wanna make sure we get our water plant focused on, because I think that's where our best scoring, because this is all based on scoring, you know, how they do their, all their projects. And based on the damages that we got at the water plant and resiliency projects we're working on, that scoring's gonna shift more towards being favorable towards our water plant. So that's a little bit of update on that.
Okay. Council under items F and G, some of those, Bo will not be here next Monday, so we can maybe take some of those off the agenda if council so wishes.
I'll leave one there. Bo is so modest about reporting things like a five hundred thousand dollar jump in our reserve fund, that we need to have somebody else speak up and tell who that next week.
Okay. I don't think, shouldn't be any questions on the food truck ordinance, we know where that's at. And I'm asking council. We're working on the committee residential requirement, so that will remain? Status report for COG, that can probably be removed, is that so, council?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, all items under G. Does anyone have a problem with removing all of those? Or is there one that council would like to stay on the agenda?
I have a question about that, D W I, is that state or federal move, D W I?
It's state.
State?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so council, is it okay if we take G off?
Why would we take it off?
Bo's not gonna be here to talk about any of it, and we've pretty well got the rundown on every one of those items.
As of today, we did, you know, I don't.
There won't really be.
I don't see any reason to take them off. If, if there's nothing new to report, they just, they'll go unreported next week, huh?
Okay.
So the town manager can just come up here and say there's nothing new to report?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. All right, that's all that's on the agenda for tonight. Thank you, Bo. Under item, well, actually, before we adjourn the meeting, I need to announce that a special call meeting will be held Monday, August fourth, in the council chamber, starting at five P M. That's Monday, August fourth, at five P M for a special call meeting. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
There's a favor, signify, I'm saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
So that'll be it, thank you, council.